This conference will now be recorded.
I'm going to call the March 2nd, 2021 council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Please give us a moment of silence for remembering of Helen Carter who passed away recently in the Bucyrus community. She was a volunteer with the Red Cross or the Red Cross Blood Mobile and the Salvation Army. May she rest in peace. We have with us Pastor Tim Compton of Wayside Chapel that's going to lead our invocation tonight.
Let's pray. Father, we just thank you for the opportunity of being together this evening. We do pray for these individuals, these leaders who will make decisions tonight. We do pray for your wisdom upon themselves as they make those decisions that affect all of us, and we pray that they will seek your face and your wisdom through these days. Thank you for civil government and for the great advantage and the peace and order it brings to our lives. And we just pray that as we think about what you've done for us, that we'll always be thankful for Jesus Christ coming to this earth to die for our sins. And we pray that we'll always honor and uplift his name. Again, we just ask your blessing upon this meeting and for each one to use wisdom and judgment and to be kind to one another tonight as well. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. McKeever.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Me.
Here.
Truka.
Here.
Sherick.
Here.
Foote.
President.
All staff.
Here.
For you are the minutes from the February 2nd, 2021 regular meeting. Does anybody have any questions about the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Minutes are approved. This is a time we grant permission for visitors to speak. We have a...we had somebody from the IUE CWA Local 84704 Union with us. Please go to the podium.
Steve Pfeifer, 309 James Street, Bucyrus, Ohio. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Most of you know me already. I'm a former member of the Bucyrus City Council and Vice President of the IUE CWA Local 704 representing my fellow workers at GE Lighting. Seven and a half years ago in August 2013, I and my fellow employees at the entire...in the entire Bucyrus community were excited when GE's Chairman and CEO Jeff Immelt announced a partnership with Walmart. GE announced they would invest 30 million in its GE Lighting Division to boost LED research and production, adding 130 new jobs. This was, Immelt said, evidence of GE's continuing commitment to creating advanced manufacturing jobs in U.S. and yet another sign of an American manufacturing renewal. Of course, we were all filled with hope and joy. Bucyrus's...GE's press release went on to quote Bill Simon, Walmart's U.S. President, who explained, "We are committed to buying an additional 50 billion in U.S.-made products over the next decade." The following year, 2014, Walmart upped its pledge to 250 billion, and our plant began to hum like the well-oiled machine it was. So what changed? What went wrong? Because we were told that the LED was the future of the plant and the Bucyrus Lighting operations. Behind the scenes, Walmart and GE changed their plans and began to offshore the production of bulbs to China, including a GE-owned factory called Topstar. The 10-year commitment to boost made in the USA is still promoted by Walmart, but now the collaboration with GE is to build anywhere but in America. So who was Savant Systems Company that you began to hear about less than a year ago? You might not know them, but you might have heard about their major investor, the Wall Street hedge fund, Colbert, Kravitz, and Roberts. In 2014, KKR took a 35% stake in Savant Systems. KKR is one of the first and largest and most notorious firms that takes stakes in U.S. companies and squeezes them for a short-term boost in value and then unloads them and looks to the next target. KKR made Savant the perfect partner to GE and Walmart. Savant has no manufacturing factories, no manufacturing experience. We see them as a foil to divert attention from Walmart and GE's plan to abandon Bucyrus and America. By shifting ownership but not control of GE Lighting, GE will avoid millions of dollars in severance pay to employees here in Bucyrus as mandated by our collective bargaining agreement with GE. This is the agreement and burden that allowed us to be the last GE Lighting plant in America. GE Lighting has announced that they will lay off 81 of my fellow employees at the end of this week. They believe that this is the end of the story. Walmart hopes that this is the end of the story, and yet there is another two years to Walmart's current 10-year "Made in America" commitment, a commitment we hope Walmart will once again renew. We, the union and employees at GE Lighting, are not giving up. We hope that you will not give up on us either. Representing the plant employees in our union Local 704 of the IUE CWA, I'm requesting that Mayor Reiser join me as a delegation to Walmart's headquarters in Bentonville, Arkansas, to ask Walmart's officers to fulfill the pledge that Bill Simon made on behalf of Walmart seven and a half years ago. Walmart is the sole customer of the LED bulb that GE Lighting is shipping to China. Walmart has the authority and the means to insist that this bulb be made in Bucyrus, Ohio. We want Walmart to honor their commitment to "Made in USA." We want them to honor their commitment to shorten supply chains, to lower carbon emissions. In the past few weeks, workers and environmental groups have protested Walmart's decision at over 70 Walmart stores from California to Georgia, from Chicago to Texas. Today, we are asking Bucyrus's elected officials to come with us to Bentonville. If we sit back quietly, it is likely that the remaining jobs will soon follow this first group and the entire facility here in Bucyrus will close. People of Bucyrus brought these LED bulbs to market. We are calling on Walmart and GE to keep production here at home in our community. This is possible. We can do this. Thank you.
No need. Does anybody else want to address counsel for the public or visitor participation?
Mr. President, I don't know when the appropriate time, so I'd like to do this now. I want to thank each and every one of you for the flowers that you sent at the passing of my mother. I just wanted to take a moment to say it was very appreciated by myself and my family, so thank you all.
Is there any final public participation for the guest speaking period? If not, we will move on to communications and petitions.
Yes, we've got two communications here. The first one is from the Whitestone Township Board of Trustees. It is dated February 22. It's addressed to Bucyrus City Council. To whom this may concern, the Board of Whitestone Township Trustees does not wish to annex any property into Bucyrus city limits and will not agree to doing so. Land has been taken from the township in the past without agreement. The township has no interest in changing the boundary limits into Bucyrus city. Sincerely, Andy Lord Trustee, Steve Jones Trustee, and Gary Robinson Trustee. This has to be accepted and filed.
Need a motion to accept and file that letter.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And we have a letter here from the City Property Maintenance Appeals Board. This is addressed to City Council as of February 23 of this year. The terms have expired for three members of the Property Maintenance Board of Appeals as of December 31, 2020. The three members are Floyd Farmer, Glenn Ackerman, and Ron Boars. Floyd Farmer and Ron Boars have volunteered to continue to serve on the Property Maintenance Board of Appeals, and should council...and should council choose to renominate them. Glenn Ackerman has chosen not to return as a member. Please refer to this to council for legislation and an additional nomination. Respectfully, Alyssa Grabowski, legal assistant, and this needs to be referred to the Economic Development Committee.
The motioner for that to Economic Development?
Second.
Doug was second.
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. President, while he's here, I would like to nominate the esteemed Steve Pfeifer to replace Mr. Ackerman, if he's willing to do so.
That looks like so.
Would you be willing to do that, Steve?
I'll second that. I'll second.
Do we still have to pass legislate?
Yeah, we have to just refer to committee.
You're almost there.
Um... Do we still have that motion?
No.
Okay.
Excuse me. I think that the Health and Safety Committee handled that from the board of this first time.
Yes.
I don't recall. We can refer to Health and Safety.
Yeah.
Put it in both maybe.
Health and Safety, which one?
Property Maintenance.
Property Maintenance. It's been in Health and Safety.
Property is Health and Safety.
What was the other committee you were talking about?
Economic Development usually does the subcommittee appointments, but Property Maintenance is a Health and Safety issue.
Yeah.
So we need a motion to refer it to Health and Safety then?
Some would.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Standing Committee reports with plating, Mr. Truka.
Okay. Bucyrus City Council Joint Committee Meeting was Thursday, February 18th, 2021. Members present were Kevin Myers, James, me, and myself, Ciara and Sherick, Doug Foote, Lisa Alsop, and Mark McKeever was absent. I called the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. There was no public participation. Plating, I called the order at 6:01 PM. Members present were Doug Foote, James, me, and myself, Acting Chair. Number one, approval of minutes. Foote made a motion to accept the minutes of the committee's meeting of February 4th, 2021, with a second by me. Motion passed by voice vote. Number two, Oakwood Avenue Railroad Crossing. Leon Jackson of Norfolk Southern explained that the railroad company has been approached by the Ohio Rail Development Commission about closing the railroad crossing on East Oakwood Avenue. He explained that there has been tasks with exploring whether the crossing could be closed without inconveniencing residents and businesses. Tracker trailers regularly make deliveries to a business in that area. Two detour proposals were later presented to the committee, one of which would utilize alleys to direct traffic back to Clay Street, while the other would consist of a turnaround at the intersection of Clay and Oakwood. Both proposals would necessitate the demolition of a handful of structures, one owned by the railroad and one owned by Steve Harder, who have voiced approval of the proposals while stressing that the streets in question are very narrow. There would be no cost to the city. East Oakwood Avenue between the tracks and Prospect would become a dead-end street, and committee members asked whether there's enough room to create a turnaround at the end of it. Concerns were voiced about stop trains blocking this and other crossings in the area, as well as the prospect of creating an East Oakwood that's disconnected from the rest of East Oakwood. The matter was continued. I recessed the plating committee at 6:29 PM.
Does anybody have any questions for plating?
Any question, the comment. I just by coincidence know the homeowner that is the house that is right next to that railroad crossing on the southwest side, and I asked him his opinion about the matter, and he said that he would not mind it. His biggest concern was is the house that is directly across the street from him, which would be on the northwest corner of that crossing. Apparently, they have a larger amount of cars that park there, so they actually use the lot that is on the southeast side of that crossing for extra parking. So he would be concerned with them having their cars and where they would park them. But other than that, he said he would not be against closing the railroad highway. That's all.
Anybody else? Gonna move on to Health and Sa...Health and Safety. Mr. Myers.
Thursday, February 18th, 2021, Health and Safety met from 6:30 PM to 7:02 PM. Members present were Bruce Truka, James, me, and myself, Chair, Mark McKeever was absent. Topic one was approval of minutes. Mr. Me made a motion to approve the minutes for the committee's meeting of February 4th, 2021, with a second by Truka. Motion passed by voice vote. Topic two, EMS service. Following council's decision last year to have the city leave the Central Joint Ambulance District at the close of its current contract expiring later this year, the administration has proposed having the city operate its own EMS service and offering it to district members. The proposal includes an annual subsidy of $11.50 per residence in the first year of contract, which compares to the existing subsidy of $10.25, rising to $20 in the contract's final year. These rates are contingent with all the current district members signing on. Safety Service Director Jeff Wagner indicated that members have expressed interest in the city's proposal and that the consensus is needed by May 1. Acting Fire Chief Chad Schwimley added that the city has discussed the number of EMS vehicles that would be available and other logistics with district members. Council President Kurt Fankhauser noted that the proposal is significantly different from one outlined by consultant William Kramer in a study detailed to the committee in April 2020. Fankhauser added that he was made aware of the city proposal very late in the process and that the district wanted to know where council stands on the idea. Kramer, who attended the meeting virtually, suggested that it made sense for the city to pursue operating its own EMS service, but that it will need seven to eight EMS staffers to make it work. Fankhauser noted that the proposal envisions fewer EMS staffers responsible for Bucyrus and the surrounding area than are what available now via Portsmouth Ambulance Service. Wagner noted that the city envisions beginning EMS service by November 1, possibly sooner. All council members present for the Joint Regular Committee meeting expressed support for the proposal. The matter was continued. And then Myers recessed the Health and Safety meeting at 7:02. And Mr. Hill, I do have one thing I would like to point out that I think is incorrect. Up towards the beginning of topic number two, it said that it was $11.50 per residence, and it should be per resident.
Okay. I'll make that change for Thursday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Health and Safety? Hearing none. Public lands and buildings, Ms. Sherick?
Public lands and buildings met Thursday, February 18th, 2021, from 7:02 to 7:25 PM. Members present were Bruce Truka, Doug Foote, and myself, Chair, Mark McKeever was absent. Number one, we have the approval of minutes. Foote made a motion to approve the minutes of the committee's meeting from February 4th, 2021, with a second by Truka. Motion passed by voice vote. Number two, various city-owned residential properties. The committee was provided with a map detailing of residential properties the city owns or could soon own on Woodlawn Avenue and on Russell Avenues and Baylor Street in the vicinity of Woodlawn. Law Director Rob Ratliff explained that some of the properties are with the Crawford County Land Bank now, will be coming back to the city, while others are facing tax foreclosure and still more could be sold to the city by a private property owner. It was noted that flooding has historically been a problem for the properties on Russell Avenue. Discussion follows on possibly changing the dimensions of two adjacent lots at Woodlawn and Baylor, given that a neighbor has expressed an interest in purchasing one of them. The matter was continued. Number three, various open projects. A proposed tree ordinance that was referred to the Public Lands and Buildings and Health and Safety Committees in 2017 has only been discussed in the latter committee. Given that, Foote made a motion to drop the matter from the Public Lands and Buildings Committee's open project list, with a second by Truka. Motion passed by voice vote. The matter remains in open project and Health and Safety Committee. Concerning the derelict properties at 214 East Perry Street, Ratliff noted he's still negotiating with the owner over the demolition of a derelict structure there that contains asbestos. Concerning the derelict property at 311 Blicky Street, Ratliff noted that Operation Hope is interested in acquiring it for transitional housing, and that legislation will be needed to transfer the city-owned property to the City Community Improvement Corporation. It was noted that the property is near the Harmon Park soccer fields. Foote made a motion to request regular legislation to transfer the property at 331 Blicky Street with a second by Truka. Motion passed by voice vote. Sheriff recessed Public Lands and Buildings Committee at 7:25.
Does anybody have any questions for Public Lands and Buildings? Hearing none. Economic Development, Mr. Foote?
Economic Development Committee met Thursday, February 18th, 2021, from 7:25 to 7:38 PM. Members present were Lisa Alsop, Kevin Myers, Ciara and Sherick, and myself, Chair. Up first, we had the approval of minutes. Ms. Alsop made a motion to approve the minutes from the committee's February 4th meeting with a second by Myers. Motion passed by voice vote. Up next, we had the annexation along East Mansfield Street. Committee was provided with a map detailing properties along East Mansfield Street with annexation potential. It was suggested that letters be sent out to property owners to gauge their interest in being annexed by the city. Law Director Rob Ratliff noted that the recent annexation of 1885 East Mansfield Street removes the potential for islands in some locations. He suggested that Whitestone Township Trustees also be consulted. Council President Kurt Fankhauser echoed that suggestion. It was also noted that the annexation of 1885 East Mansfield Street was an expedited process initiated by the Crawford County Commissioners. The discussion followed on the pros and cons of being annexed by the city. Mayor Jeff Reiser noted that the administration will reach out to some businesses in the area to gauge their interest in annexation. Matter was continued, and I recessed Economic Development at 7:30.
Does anybody have any questions for Economic Development? Hearing none. Moving on to Service Committee, Mr. Truka.
Okay. Service Committee met at 7:38 PM on Thursday, February 18th, 2021. Members present were Lisa Alsop, Kevin Myers, Ciara and Sherick, and myself. Number one, approval of minutes. Alsop made a motion to approve the minutes for the committee's meeting on February 4th, 2021, with a second by Sherick. Motion passed by voice vote. Number two, water line expansion. Law Director Rob Ratliff explained that the legislation is needed to authorize the Service Safety Director to enter into two agreements. One, to transfer the operations of Crawford County Sewer District Number Two from the Crawford County Commissioners to the city. The other, for the city to sell water to the village of Nevada, Wyandotte County.
And it would allow us to fund many improvements and repairs, as well as hiring a Parks Director who would be in charge of programs for young kids, as well as senior citizens. Parks are getting a lot of use. I was...I walked there several times a week tonight. I saw eight kids playing basketball. There was a bunch of kids on the playground equipment, about a dozen walkers, and two owls tonight in...at the park. So a lot of things going on there. It's a beautiful, beautiful park. And so we just...we have other parks too that are very nice that could use some TLC too. Oh, good. I'd like to get into greater detail on Thursday...on Thursday evening. Like I said, it's our job to leave this place better, pointing in the right direction. We've had specific challenges the past few years, especially with tax revenue. One of the things that's disappointed me the most is we have not been able to grow our tax revenue enough to be able to fund parks properly. So I think it's time to make some dramatic changes. We compete. Our biggest export here in Bucyrus, besides light bulbs, is our young kids. And it's sad to say that many of them leave and don't come back. I was one that did come back and I've loved it and wanted to raise my kids here. My wife and I never, never regretted that. So, you know, we want to make sure we make Bucyrus a special place for people. And one of the things that people want today, they want to get outside, as evidenced by the amount of traffic that we had last year at our parks. It was incredible. But we compete against Columbus. We compete against every city our size and even bigger ones. For residents, those residents pay taxes. They support businesses. They open businesses. They go to schools. They fill the church pews. They go to Rotary or Kiwanis and many of the other service clubs. And so we need to make some kind of investment in our future. And I think a very good place to start is with the parks. So if you're so kind as to refer that, I will make a presentation Thursday evening.
Does anybody have any questions for the mayor's report?
I'll make a motion to refer...
I'll second that.
Park.
All in favor? All in favor of referring a park levy to finance? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Does anybody have any other questions for the mayor? Oh, Mr. McKeever?
We forgot to make a motion to accept the committee's report collectively.
We... Okay, we need a motion and accept.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, back to...any other questions for the mayor? Gonna move on to Safety Service Director's report.
Okay, thanks for the referral. I appreciate that. This is Jeff's report. Gov deals...
Gov Deals need to refer the authorization to use Gov Deals Auction Site to the Finance Committee. The Board of Control awarded the Route 98 Water Line Project, R.A. Boris. That contract was signed today and they're just gonna be starting here, I think, first part of April and to be, should be done by the end of July. So, we're gonna send letters out to the folks on Route 98. I think there's eight or 10 potential customers. See if anyone is interested in tapping in. We'll keep informed on that. Material bids were open February 23rd and the department heads are now reviewing the prices. We applied for a $13,000 FAA grant to help cover operating costs at the airport. The compost site, Parks Enterprises were grinding a lot of the compost and are just about finished with it, so have room for a new compost. They're gonna fill in there and spread seed and next week compost site will be open regular hours as the weather's improving dramatically and just in time for Mark to get back from vacation. Thanks for bringing the good weather. We're gonna be open Wednesdays, Fridays and Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We need lifeguards. We're gonna, this is the first year in three years, we're gonna get a full year in the pool, weather permitting. So, I don't wanna jinx this, but we need applications for lifeguards and concession workers. There's an application on the city website, so if you know anybody, please download that or come up to City Hall. We have copies here. We need seasonal park help. So, there's also same procedure, website or City Hall. Semi-annual report to the U.S. EPA was submitted by Arcadis in February. Testing has been initiated for the Police Department for dispatchers and entry-level police officers. Again, please check out the city website if you know of anybody that's interested. The reservoirs, we still have some work to do from ODNR's directive on Riley and the NEF reservoir. And we just contracted with our, one of our engineering firms, S&amp;M Engineering, and they're gonna be doing that work and we will keep you updated as the work progresses. Acting Fire Chief Chad Schwimley is no longer the acting fire chief. He is now the fire chief. So, for a year and a half or however long, it's been a long time for him and we had a very nice ceremony and Chad was extremely touched to become the eighth fire chief in the history of the city of Bucyrus. So, welcome and congratulations and thank you to Chief Keller for your many years of service. And the bicentennial banners are up. Many of you have seen those and I think they look really nice. And check our website, bucyrus2021.com for information on events that will be starting very soon. That's it for Mr. Wagner's report.
I have a question. Are we not doing civil service tests for the fire department, May 22nd?
Already did.
We already did them? Okay.
They have an active list.
City Service Safety Director looking to cover issues with water. The houses along Oak Ridge from another owner's home. Down the back, something, something happened years ago.
Oh, sure, sure.
Pile were broken. There's a lot of issue with that.
Water lays in that spot there.
There's a whole river that floods through. But then I was just made aware that there's an issue on the other side of Wedston as well.
On the south side?
Mr. Kennedy contacted us about the fact that his neighbor is frustrated by whatever this water is and built a dike between yards which now floods this and we weren't sure if that was even.
We'll come out and have a look.
I get forward pictures of that and information on to Law Director, zoning and Service Director.
But I'm looking at, if we've got water issues on both sides, maybe there's something else going on that could be causing some of it as well.
Yeah, there's occasionally floods out there, but you know.
It's been worse and worse, so.
We had 20 inches of snow and an inch or so of rain. I know it's, there's a, there's a lot of water laying around.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So, we'll be out to look and take care of it.
That would be nice.
See everything we can do.
Any other question for the Service Director's report?
I do have one, Mr. President. When we originally, way back when, had the compost site open on the Wednesdays, Fridays and Saturdays, we used to have employees sitting there checking IDs. We're not, I don't think there's signs anywhere for the 48 hours.
There's two hour signs downtown.
Can we still prosecute online?
That's, yeah, it's different.
Someone messaged me that the audio for tonight's meeting is going in and out and people can't understand it. Just, I, I don't know who to tell. It's Vicky. Vicky said she can't hear us. And she said, right, and she, well, and she said that the mic at the, at the. Well, it's going in and out.
Okay.
She just told you the same thing.
Did she? I just happened to look at my phone. I heard.
We had some issues with streaming last time, which is why we're concurrently doing the GoToMeeting and Facebook right now, just so that if, if that had dropped out completely, they could have went to that. But nobody's logged into the GoToMeeting.
I like it though.
Oh, no, there is one person logged into the GoToMeeting.
Might be Vicky.
Any other questions for the law director?
No, well, just thank you for that email you sent out today about the impact that vacant abandoned properties have on water rates and everything else in this community as well.
I did some more math too, because we had the revenue funds, but yeah.
Wondered that, I didn't see that.
I just, I sent an email to Kevin and Doug.
Yes, because I specifically asked for it. Because I was just curious, what's the impact of our vacant properties and abandoned properties have on yours and I's utility rates? And the reality is, is every debt account or every property that goes vacant is just a little bit more than you or I end up paying on our utility bill. Because it costs so much to run that budget every year and us residents are responsible for keeping that budget paid, so.
And if we tear one down, we're still spreading that cost over the remaining.
Residents, absolutely. So, that's why it's imperative.
We need to get more people to move into Bucyrus.
And we need to get people that own properties to make sure, maintain and take care of it.
Okay. Any other things for the law director? Do we have an auditor's report?
None, well, no, we have several reports from her. We have the latest income tax and revenue tallies to budget reports for the month of February. Those are in your packages for your review. You have the latest statement of cash position dated the end of February, also for your review. And then you have the auditor's statement of cash position from January 31st, since we didn't meet two weeks ago because of the weather. That January 31 report needs to be, well, here's a question. We didn't have a meeting two weeks ago, so we're not gonna accept and file that. So, just to regard that, we're not accepting and filing that because you didn't get that two weeks ago. So, those are all in your packets for your review.
She doesn't have any referrals, right?
No referrals.
I think that's a first. Okay, treasurer's report?
That's been submitted for your review as well. For January 31st.
And the police chief annual report?
That's in there. All the annual reports are at the back of your packets. They're all shown online in the media hazard as well. The police report, the police department report is in there, the fire department report is in there, as well as all the other department heads. All those reports are there for your review and study at your leisure.
Since neither of those are here, we will just make a mo, need a motion to accept the city officers' reports.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Reports are accepted. Visitors input regarding reports of standing and special committees and of city officers. Is there anybody that wants to give input on anything that's happened thus far in the
I have a question. When is the appropriate time to discuss maybe a representative eventually going to Arkansas and discussing?
Georgia?
Is it Georgia?
I thought it said Arkansas. Arkansas, sorry.
I don't know when the appropriate time.
The mayor and elected officials.
Mayor said he was gonna call him tomorrow.
I spoke with a woman. Yeah, you won't get through on the phone. I tried to call. I also called Jim Jordan's office. Had a lady call me.
No, I'm saying that the mayor said that he was gonna call Steve tomorrow.
Oh, good, good. I didn't hear that part, I'm sorry.
Well, that's because it happened as they, Steve was leaving, he was.
Ear hustler.
I was listening and was watching.
Ear hustler.
Yeah, pretty much, so.
I just wanted, I just didn't know when the appropriate time.
You wanna go, Lisa?
Absolutely not, but.
I would go.
I haven't, I have an adult teenage son and I'm just almost scared to death to leave my house to my dogs too, but.
I would if I wasn't the only one running.
I am not working and if it's not going to be an extended trip, then if that's what I need to do, I will.
So, Kevin and Bruce wants to go to Arkansas?
Absolutely.
I would love to go, I just can't leave my office right now, I'm the only one running it. Otherwise, I wouldn't, heartbeat. This is something that's important to say.
I think it's very important to our community. I think we need to take seriously.
That business means a lot to this community.
And I think that losing those 81 jobs is just the beginning.
Absolutely.
Sorry. I don't mean to be a Debbie Downer.
Mr. Piper said that and I believe he was.
I believe it in my heart that that's what the intent is to just slowly chip away at it.
I've already messaged all the Republican, or all the representatives and the senators that.
I, I think if, if the city does send somebody, that those people shouldn't have to pay their own way, so if there's a travel budget for the city, I think.
I wouldn't care.
Yeah, that should be used.
I wouldn't care about that because we've got enough issues with money around here. I could, I, I'm, I don't have a lot of money, but I would still pay to go down there and not expect the city to pay my way. Just saying, sorry.
That's up to you.
We, we have, we have so many people not able to pay taxes right now. And we have places where all that money's needed. I'd rather know that it's going to, keeping us.
So, you know, we don't have a travel budget, you know, I will pay my own way, you know, so I, I don't bring, like, legitimately, I think you could.
I will donate toward travel expenses out of my own personal pocket. I don't want to go because I don't want to leave my house and my kid, but, but I would help towards paying theirs.
High school senior alone at home, not always good.
My wife would appreciate that.
You guys all carpooling down there or?
I'm not riding with you.
I'm the only one with a CDL. What are you talking about?
No, you didn't get a CDL.
No, that was talking about going. You didn't say you'd go. I would be interested in someone checking on airfare because. Yeah, I, I would be interested in checking on airfare. I would think that it would be a really quick trip if you took an airplane.
You fly one day and then you visit.
And then you come back the next.
You're out two days.
Well, they're, I'm not trying to get into conversations that maybe I'm not entitled to be in, but will there be people other than Steve that are going from GE?
From GE?
Sounds like the union guys.
The union guys.
Mr. Piper said he was gonna, he asked us to join him.
Okay.
I know at least he, and I would assume maybe, you know, he spoke for them in behalf of the president tonight.
Okay, good, at least.
Yeah.
Are you going, James?
No. Sorry.
I could use a vacation, I just can't get away.
Barb won't let you, now that she left you. I said, now that she left you.
Well, if you're, if you're all gonna go down and you're all willing to donate, I guess we don't need to put it in a travel.
Nope.
Thing, so I guess you can do it.
On your own accord.
So, any other?
For those of you that if you do go, thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other public input on those committee reports? Do we need a recess? Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time?
Yes, we have, we've got three resolutions. Resolution number 207, 2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Development Reservices Agency for the execution of a housing revolving loan fund administration agreement as a part of the 2020 Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program application season, retroactive to January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021, and declaring an emergency, that's referred to the Housing and Development Committee. Resolution number 208, 2021, a resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an agreement with the village of Nevada for the city of Bucyrus to sell water to the village of Nevada as detailed in attached Exhibit A and declaring an emergency, that's referred to the Service Committee. Resolution number 209, 2021, a resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an agreement with the Crawford County Commissioners to accept the transfer of operations of Crawford County Sewer District Number Two, including its water lines and District Number Three from the county to the city, with edits as detailed in attached Exhibit A and declaring an emergency, that is referred also to the Service Committee.
Motion accept those the first reading?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. They are referred back to originated committee, public participation. Any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the first time. Is there any public comment? Okay, moving on, committee reports, economic development, Mr. Foote?
Economic development's favorable to Resolution 207-2021, Housing Program Income Revolving Loan Fund Agreement.
Mr. Truca?
Okay. Service is favorable to Resolution 208-2021, it's approving the water line going to Nevada. And service is favorable to Resolution 209-2021, and that's accepting the sewer agreement between Crawford County and the city of Bucyrus.
Need a motion to accept those before?
Motion.
Second. In favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Further consideration of pending legislation for the second and third reading of proposed Resolution 207-2021. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules with reading of the caption and text and declaring emergency?
Second.
Hold.
Aye.
Sheriff.
Aye, yes.
Allsepp.
Yes. I said yes, I'm sorry.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Resolution number 207, 2021.
Do I hear a motion to adopt Resolution 207-2021?
So moved.
Second.
Foote?
Yes.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Allsepp?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Resolution number 207-2021 is duly adopted for the second and third reading of proposed Resolution 208-2021. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules with reading of the caption and text and declare an emergency?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, I've got Myers as a second. Sheriff?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Allsepp?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Motion number 208, 2021.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 208-2021?
So moved.
Okay, it's McKeever and Sheriff. McKeever?
Yes.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Allsepp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Truca?
Resolution 208-2021 is duly adopted for the second and third reading of proposed Resolution 209-2021. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules with reading of the caption and text and declare
Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules with reading of the caption and text and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Foote.
Yes.
McKeever.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Truca.
Yes.
Sharick.
Yes.
Allsepp.
Yes.
Resolution number two zero nine, twenty twenty-one.
Do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance, ordinance two zero, Resolution number two zero nine dash twenty twenty-one?
So moved.
Second.
Truca.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Sharick.
Yes.
Foote.
Yes.
Allsepp.
Yes.
McKeever.
Yes.
Resolution two zero nine dash twenty twenty-one is duly adopted. Open unfinished business. You already told about your, your department annual reports are in your packet. New miscellaneous business. Does anybody have any new miscellaneous business?
I do have a referral I'd like to bring up.
I'm honored.
I'd like to refer, um, a zoning change classification for four sixteen and four sixteen and a half, South Sandusky Avenue, which is the Flower and Whisk Bakery, from neighborhood business to the downtown business district uh, in effort to accommodate the proposed use of the property for their outdoor dining in the said right-of-way. And said use in a, conditional use of the downtown business district, but not permitted in the neighborhood business district.
I'll make the motion.
Next slide.
Anybody say, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed. It's going to plating, by the way.
Yep.
Um, does anybody else have any other new miscellaneous? We've already got it in Service Committee, the access channel. There has been some more development on that, so there's gonna be something in there. Mr. Ross Dash had some paperwork that he handed me today on that. He might need to buy some more equipment. The sound ordinance. Want to put that on again?
No.
No.
Nuisance tree ordinance.
That's still in health and safety. Nuisance tree's still in health and safety. We got it out of.
Well, I mean, you wanna talk about it or? Should we take the annexation stuff off since what sometimes should no one do?
No, we should leave it on so we can put it to bed.
I mean, take it off of the open projects.
We'll leave it on the open projects.
That has to be added committee.
It's gotta, I would say it's gotta be taken.
Hey, why, why not? At this point, why leave it on? It's just been sitting there dead for three years.
Yeah, but Mayor Reese was gonna check into it because you asked him to.
Yes.
Right.
So, we need to talk about all of it.
We're developing, or contacting others right now. Okay, no other new miscellaneous business. Nobody's absent. Who needs excused? What is on the agenda, Mr. Hill, for Thursday?
We've got four new referrals. We have the Property and Events Appeals Board to Health and Safety of Council. Those are the appointments, uh, three appointments, or two reappointments, one new appointment. Uh, the Parks Levy from the mayor to finance, the annual Gov Deals Authorization from the Service Safety Director to finance. The reasonably, is that South Sandusky?
Yes.
South Sandusky, four sixteen, four sixteen and a half. That's from Council Platy. Already in committee is the access, access communications from, that's in service. Anything else, it's a very convenient, anything can be brought up. Anything that you want on the announced agenda, let me know by eleven A M. tomorrow.
Open projects. We could go over those again if, if there's anything people wanna see, but other than that.
Yeah, open projects, always, every.
Excellent.
Kurt, I'm not sure if I'll be here Thursday. I'll do my best. My daughter's having surgery and I'm her ride, so. And they don't let you know what time the surgery is until the day before. No.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
They don't tell you a time.
Adjourned at eight thirty-five.
I have one now. She said.
Did they make the date of COVID?